I'd like to call this meeting of the Rockingham County School Board to order for September 28th of 2020, regular meeting. We have need to approve our operating agenda for this evening's meeting. May I have a motion for that?
I move, we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Is there any discussion, any questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Vote passes. Please join together for a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I would like to welcome everyone and thank you for coming to the meeting this evening. We now enter the part of the agenda for public comments. The signup sheet has two names on, and I think Dr. Shackle has received a number that he will read once these speakers have spoken here. Could I call on Jared Cromer, please?
How are y'all doing?
Doing well. How are you?
Not bad, and I did submit this online for obviously you to read. Obviously, you don't need to read it now. I decided it was best to do it here in person, so I want to thank you guys for your work toward trying to reopen the schools. The reason I'm here is because I want to make sure if we work towards attending school in person, we need to make sure our faculty and staff work with the students appropriately. There may be new issues arise that we haven't dealt with in the past and may not know how to handle, and that can be confusing and aggravating for parents and staff. But we need to keep our frustrations directed at the appropriate places and not towards students. If a parent or a staff is having strong feelings or concerns about an issue related to planning, scheduling, buses, or lunches, that issue needs to be addressed with the appropriate either administrator or parent and not the student. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cromer. And please forgive me, I have a little trouble reading longhand, but John? Okay. At this time, would anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and...
My name is Drew McKellar, and I was here last month. I agree with his frustrations on a lot of this because, as I explained then, I'm a single grandparent with custody of my two grandchildren. This is Weston. There had been a lot of things go wrong with the system. As I explained to the gentleman over there just a few minutes ago, what it told my grandson on his iPad yesterday, the invalid Zoom ID. And that came after the hotspot not working that they had issued him. And this is not happening just once in a while. It's happening two or three times through the week. Friday, he got kicked off the last half hour and couldn't get back on. Now today, it happened about 30 minutes in, and he did get back on. But there's a lot of this. I understand that he might be in the 15% or the 10%, but those children have to be looked at too. Just because they're in the low percentile, you know, oh gosh, we've got 85% that's working great. The other 15% have to learn too. I also want to say, when I left here last time, my grandson said that he had something he wanted to say, and now I'm going to ask him. Weston, do you think you're learning this way very good?
Not very much.
Do you think that it is easy to navigate this system? When I mean navigate, I mean move around in it to where they tell you to find your homework and your stuff like that.
A little bit. Sometimes I don't know what you want to go on to.
Okay. Why do you think you need to be in school?
Because kids can also make friends there. And kids need friends to play. They don't need to just play on Zoom with friends so that they can play around together more, better.
Say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all, and that's the reason I came here today also would be to find out if y'all are looking at opening up some more classes for kids.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
And we have a number of comments that were submitted online. And as in the past, I will read those. As we indicated in the online submission form, there is a 30-minute time limit overall for public comments, and there's a three-minute time limit for each comment, so we will keep track of the time. And if a comment is too long, then we will stop, and we can have those posted online in the school board materials for public comments. So the first comment is from Samantha Al-Sawadi. The comment is, "School needs to open full-time and all kids need to go." The second comment is from Amanda Thompson. "I have been watching virtually since you started broadcasting meetings. I appreciate the ability to visually access the meetings, but wanted to comment about the struggle to hear what is being said. I have a high-quality computer set up at home and have tried using both headphones and earbuds, but in order to hear what is being said, I need to turn my outbound volume up to max, and then there's always a buzzing noise that gives such an intense headache and interferes with the words being said. The captioning is terrible, not your fault, and delayed, but doesn't even pick up the speech, so I can't rely on reading the text. As a parent of two RCPS students who wants to stay informed, I would love to be able to access the meetings auditorily since I am not able to attend in person. I know I am not alone in these struggles because I have the same conversation each meeting with my parent peers who are also trying to watch the meetings. Thank you for working on these issues. I know they are just a few in a mountain of things you are trying to work on. Thank you." The next comment is from Katie Rhodes. "What is the current COVID count in RCPS? Which schools have had confirmed cases and how many in each of those schools? Why has there not been any news coverage on this like our surrounding counties? You may have reported cases to teachers and families, but without contact tracing, how are you sure you are reaching the appropriate audience with correct information?" I'm going to address that in my presentation tonight. Olivia Haimani. "I want you to know that not all of us are able to be home with our children to facilitate school during school hours five days a week. Our family has both parents working and are utilizing community childcare options. I'm especially frustrated by the idea that our children are expected to be in school during the school day. This is ridiculous and in our case also unrealistic. I understand all of the frustrations and the learning curve as we are all in the new realm of online instruction together. The staff at John C. Myers are phenomenal and are working hard to engage our children, consolidate assignments, and work with parents. However, just because our children are not doing an ungodly amount of homework every afternoon does not mean they are not learning and reading and spending time outdoors, all incredibly important aspects of childhood. I also want you to know that the Zoom classes are too large. A class of over 20 children is too much, both in person and online. In the future, I would like to see the computer lab curriculum updated to include utilizing multiple Windows typing skills, et cetera, so our children will be much more computer literate than my fifth grader currently is. I know that as we go, kinks are getting worked out, expectations will even out, and the children will gain a significant boost to their computer literacy. I ask that you allow this to occur by continuing online instruction this semester at a minimum. We've invested in semester-long childcare options. We have no idea what the virus combined with flu season will look like, and it is unclear what will happen when JMU resumes in-person classes on October 5th. Additionally, when classes abruptly go online in the future, as online learning in some form will remain with us forever, we can all be much better prepared. I would also avoid yet another pivot in schedules and such that are very hard to navigate and are super stressful on the children and their families. Lastly, I thank you for your dedication to our children and their education." The next comment is from Mel Wen. "I just want to say that as a parent that is working in our surrounding counties and that has educated my children through Virtual Virginia Academy, the Rockingham County Virtual Platform Schedule and Training for Teachers is by far the most confusing and unreasonable system for families that are not tech savvy. We're lucky to work in IT, but I cannot imagine this is going smoothly for many families. There is constant troubleshooting and simple tips and tricks to utilize tools on the iPad and Chromebooks have clearly not been taught to teachers. For example, screen sharing tools, pre-recording tools, how to with Zoom, keyboard shortcuts, and much more. I would suggest the county budget to partner up to learn from K12.com, Connections, or even Augusta County to figure out what to do and how to train teachers, parents, and students. Take bits from digital solutions companies locally and get some proper tutorials that are county-specific and a tech team of expert consultants that can handle the load and do this right. It's not too late, but it will too soon. I would encourage parents to take a look at our website where multiple tutorials for our teachers have been posted by our award-winning technology staff." The next comment is from Lauren Black. "Where are the technology specialists? What about a call line for support with an assistive technology specialist contractor so those of us that have to help with school after work can have support too? These teachers don't need to spend time being tech support and learning an entire new teaching style. The system is not working without proper IT support and help desk and training for teachers, students, and parents." The next comment is from Angelique Showalter. "I approached this school year with grace, grace for the school board, the administrators, the teachers, and all support staff. I still extend that grace as we are all facing unprecedented times. However, my grace is starting to fall short. Even with strong internet signals, my sixth and eighth graders are unable to consistently connect to Zoom classes. Between two kids, there are eight different teachers, and finding assignments for each class is an adventure. Nothing is consistent. I don't fault the teachers. They're doing what they feel is best to get the content needed to their students. But after spending countless hours trying to help my children connect to classes, find assignments, be sure they're actually submitted properly, and watching them basically answer questions by copying and pasting information and not actually learning it, I'm running out of grace. I hope that Rockingham County, as well as many other Virginia districts, are ready to put the Every Student Succeeds Act to the test in the coming years. That act replaced the No Child Left Behind Act in order to give state and local officials more freedom in figuring out how to turn around low-performing schools. At the end of this year, we will have more low-performing schools in the state of Virginia than ever before. I've watched administrators struggle to turn their schools around. I've watched teachers cry real tears to help their students not stress over SOLs because they are pressured to help keep their schools in good standing. I fear for the future of our local schools because I cannot imagine the pressure that will be put on administrators and teachers as they dig their way out of the mess that we have been forced into. COVID is real, I acknowledge that, but the risk of declining mental health for our administrators, teachers, support staff, and students far outweighs the risks of immediate return to school." Thank you. The next comment, let's see here, is from Misty Cook. "Let me start off by saying this. While I believe that COVID is real and that there are instances where people have gotten really sick and died, I also believe that those same people could have very easily gotten pneumonia or the flu and died just as easily. I don't meant that to sound cold-hearted, but it is a reality. I believe that the media has highlighted data in such a way that it has caused fear in many people. All we hear is how many people have been infected or how many people have died. No one mentions how many people have successfully recovered or gives a big picture to the figures compared to population in the Commonwealth. I'm a numbers person, so let's look at a few. According to the Virginia Department of Health, as of 9/28/2020, there have been a total of 146,593 cases in Virginia. There have been 3,172 deaths in the Commonwealth. So just 2% of those infected have resulted in death. Of those 146,000 infected, 10,916 have resulted in hospitalization. That's 7.4%. I can't tell you how many of the 146,000 have recovered since I cannot locate that on the VDH website. I also cannot tell you how many of those positives were from the same patient as that figure is not on the site either." So let's get a big picture. According to Weldon Cooper, the 2020 population estimate for Virginia is 8,744,273. So let's look at the number of the estimated population in Virginia. We have had 146,593 total cases, so that comes out to just 1.68% of the population has been infected. If we look at the number of deaths compared to the total population, we come to 0.00036% of the population in Virginia has resulted in death due to COVID. Read that again, 0.00036%. The infection rate in children is even lower. According to Weldon Cooper, the 2019 population estimate for children 0-19, as 0-5 is one age groups, I included all children, is 2,87,426. According to VDH, there have been 19,666 children test positive for COVID. So 0.94% of the total child population in the Commonwealth have tested positive for COVID. Of those positive cases in children 0-19, only one death has been reported. According to VDH, there were six pediatric deaths in 17-18 due to the flu, 4,304 total confirmed tests overall. So where am I going with all of this? The numbers do not support keeping our schools closed and our kids isolated at home. Humans are social beings. Children need not only thought-provoking mental stimulation from teaching, but they need social interaction to learn how to interact in the real world." And I'm going to stop here. We will post the rest of the comment online as I'm not even halfway through at this point. Now, the next comment is from Promise Cook. "Virtual learning is not what I thought it would be. I anticipated many issues with technology, problems logging in, our internet strength not supporting multiple kids, remembering passwords, timing out, et cetera. I've been pleasantly surprised how easy at least those parts of using technology has been. What I didn't anticipate was the total lack of consistency across the board, day to day, week to week, and intangible things my kids would be missing. I have two girls in RCPS, one at BHS in 10th grade, the other at Plains Elementary in 4th grade. I love these schools. Overall, we have great administrators, teachers, and staff. We know how hard they are working despite the challenges that they are faced with, especially this year. We as parents want our kids to succeed. We want things to be normal. We want to extend grace in an unpleasant situation, but this isn't working. It isn't healthy, and it's setting our kids up for failure, and I want to explain why. My 10th grader is having two completely different experiences right now. She has four classes. In two of them, she's kept on her live Zoom for the full one hour and 15 minutes. Her teachers are asking questions, checking in, engaging with the kids. She has met both of them one-on-one during conference time, and at the end of the day, when she has a question, she emails them and gets a response. In her other two classes, she's kept on the live Zoom for 45 to 50 minutes. She is not being engaged. She has not met with or been offered a meeting with these teachers during conference time, and she has emailed them both with questions and not gotten an answer back for days. Unfortunately, in one of those cases, she had an error submitting work at the end of the week one, and an assignment was marked as an F. Despite resubmitting it and multiple attempts to discuss with the teacher, the F remains. No grace given. My 4th grader is having an easier time overall with the work. The first week, all the work for the week was sent out on Monday morning, which was great. The second week, it was sent out daily mid-afternoon, which doesn't help our particular situation where I'm home until 11-ish and then I go to work until 5:00. So morning is when we do our work. There was a challenge the first week, logging into all the different websites and figuring out where everything was and how to turn it all in. They all seemed to learn quickly and pick up on the technology, so once they figured it out, it seemed to go much more smoothly. The difficult thing last week was accessing music, PE, and art, which were all starting last week. That added more work in more different places to... That added more work and more different places to find it all. Little things like giving out weekly work assignments the same way, week to week, and making sure the kids really understand where to find everything would really help the kids and parents who are struggling to figure it out. Her teacher is great. She's extremely patient and kind, and she's trying her hardest, even though the situation isn't ideal. But there's something missing that's making it all seem like they are disjointed. If you've spent any time with kids at school, in the classroom, at lunch, or on a field trip, you can see they have all have a connection as a class and with their teacher. That isn't happening virtually. Socially and emotionally, my 4th grader is not doing well. She misses everything about not going to school. Her friends can see that they are still a lot of tears and wishing things to go back to normal. School isn't just learning division in which states border Virginia. It's about learning to build relationships outside your home with other people and having someone else to learn from beside your parents. It's about learning to build social connections, and that does not seem to be something that transfers via virtual learning. The next comment is from Amber Pence. Acknowledge COVID is real. However, right now, I feel that my child's mental health and academic success is a bigger concern than the potential exposure to COVID-19 in a classroom setting. Both my husband and I have full-time jobs. My children are being sent to new places they're not accustomed to and being asked to log into class in ways they've never done before without the in-person support of teachers or peers. Since the start of school, I've noticed a marked increase in anxiety, frustration, and negativity in regards to my children's school mindset. I feel helpless. In addition, there are barriers hindering the academic success of students using the virtual learning platform. It's not user-friendly and requires parent supervision. It's prone to error. Functions aren't consistent across grade levels or even schools, and connectivity isn't good even in areas with strong internet connections. My children are frustrated with this learning platform and are disengaging. This is a challenge for everyone, but students are being left behind academically. Nationwide schools are beginning to open, and families are being presented with in-person and virtual learning options. At the beginning of summer, I filled out a survey indicating my preference. I've always wanted my children to be in-person learners, and my feelings on this have not changed. Please consider allowing students to begin returning to school with first priority being given to 2nd through 6th grades. Thank you for your time. The next comment is from Crystal Lynn. First, I want to say I truly appreciate the hard work of every single member of the school board, central office, principals, support staff, and teachers. It is not lost to anyone that we are living in unprecedented times and that there are few solutions that are win-win for everyone. Every family that I've spoken to believes that teachers are absolutely doing the very best that they can given the situation. However, no one I have spoken to believes that the current model is serving their child well in terms of academic learning, mental health, and socially-emotional learning. As you continue to make plans moving forward, I implore you to look not only at the physical safety of students, but also the mental and socially-emotional health as well. We know that relationships are at the heart of student success. This is why in recent years, so much more emphasis has been placed on socially-emotional learning. It is very difficult for teachers to create meaningful one-on-one relationships with students in the online environment. Students are focused on jumping through hoops, meeting deadlines, figuring out technology, and not true learning. I have two children in the county, and the current model is not serving either of them well. They're not thriving in our current model, and I'm actually concerned that the current model is doing more harm than good in terms of their mental health, both in the short and long term. I've never seen them more stressed and uninterested in school. Based on the email we received from the superintendent yesterday, 9/27/2020, it seems as if no decision regarding returning to the hybrid plan of full-time will even be looked at for the next couple of weeks. One of my questions is what does the school board expect to change in the next couple of weeks, or for that matter, in the next couple of months? COVID-19 is not magically going to go away, so we have to figure out how to educate our children, given our new normal, and I would argue that figuring out how to do that with some in-person option is in the best interest of students and families. The pandemic has taught us that we need to be able to adjust and adapt to situations many of us have never encountered, and now we need to do the same in order to get those that want to return to in-person instruction back in school with teachers that feel safe to do so. I realize that you also have to think about the safety of RCPS staff in buildings. Have we asked teachers and staff in the buildings if they would rather be in the buildings with students using the strategies that we have to fight this virus, social distancing, masks, frequent hand washing, or continue the current online model? Is there a way to accommodate staff members that do not wish to return to in-person instruction with the families that do not want to return in-person school? It seems that your frontline workers should get to weigh in on this and not rely solely on current trends that also include JMU students, which is a whole other issue in and of itself. Since these strategies seem to be the best things we have to fight the virus, then let us use them in school and get students back in the building. My children understand that school will not look the same pre-pandemic as it will when they return. They have no problem wearing masks and maintaining social distancing if it means that they can sit in the classroom to receive instruction and have some social interaction. Again, it is not lost on me that the situation is nearly impossible to find solutions that work for everyone, but I felt the need to speak out for my family and a number of other families that I've spoken to in my community that are struggling and to advocate for my own children. I would ask that the school board and superintendent look at ways to get students back in the building in some form or fashion sooner rather than later. Bethany Stabler. Good evening. I'm a special education teacher from East Rockingham High School. I also have two young children who attend Riverbend Elementary. Would the school board please provide a running tally of COVID cases for the RCPS division, given that there have been so many within our county? As a parent and educator, I've found it difficult to find accurate, transparent information about the safety of the schools in which I work and my children attend. And finally, Kathleen P. I just wanted to address HLA as it applies to my child's class. The instruction is a disappointment. My child doesn't have a teacher for four of the five days this week. As the teacher is out and there's no substitute. The teacher sent a video for them to watch, but no one can open it. My child has had three total seesaw activities to do. One was write her name. One was to do calendar and make a fort to read in. That's all the outside work my child has been asked to do since school began. While into the third full week of school, this is unacceptable. In addition, we have not received any books, workbooks, or other materials. I'm deeply concerned for my child's education and had expected more from the Home Learning Academy. If it is the decision of the school board to continue to keep children at home, then there has got to be a better system for ensuring these children are receiving a quality education. And that was the last comment submitted online. Thank you.
I would ask again, is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this Thank you. Time for board member comments and highlights. I'd like to start with Renee Reed, please.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. I kind of feel like I was voted off the island. I'm way over here, and you guys are way over there. Thank you very much for all of you that are here and have spoken to the board. We do listen to the comments. We got a lot of online feedback. I know that Dr. Shackle and Dr. Shiflett and Dr. Alderfro will address those individual concerns. Dr. Shackle has that information, as we do with any concerns that come to the board regarding specific issues with teachers or technology or anything along those lines. We want our children to be in school. I listened to Weston, and you know, my heart breaks for him too. We want our children in school, but we're trying to take a measured approach because personally, I don't want to send all our kids back for two weeks and then take them all out for two weeks, and then put them all back in for two weeks and take them all out. We have some concerns about COVID. We have to continue to work through those. We need to continue to follow the guidance. So I can tell you that those things keep us awake at night. And for every one person we have who gives us feedback one way to bring the kids back, we get the same feedback to stay, to have the kids stay home. So we're trying to navigate that. Our leadership is trying to navigate that. And we continue to work through the kinks as we do the start of every school year. Every school year, which is different this year, but every school year we have kinks we need to work out, and our staff and our faculty are continuing to work on those. And the board members are in contact when we get feedback to try and talk through those to provide Dr. Shackle and his staff with information so that they can work through those. So, thank you, Mr. Falk.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
You. Okay. First of all, I guess with highlights, staying at home, it's hard to find some these days, but I do want to share that one of the things we worked on was a video for the National Ag Science Fair contest. We have, my son, Thomas, is competing, and it's being judged right now, as well as Rachel and Lauren, Rachel Cron and Lauren Wilburn, sorry. So those are some highlights that we can celebrate right now, and I hope everybody can join me in wishing those students luck as they compete at the National Ag Science Fair. Obviously, I have children in the system, so I have lots of questions, and I think I'm going to save those for later. But do, I do want to reiterate Ms. Reed's comments that we do want the kids in school, but we have to think about safety. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Dr. McQuilkin.
Yes, I would like to reiterate that we are very glad that people come and they comment. People comment in-person, people comment online. We want to hear. We can't fix if we don't hear from you, so we really appreciate the fact that you send us your comments and your concerns so that we can do something about them. On our positive note, I did receive today a note from a parent extolling the virtues of the teachers that her children has, telling us that they have, the teachers have done an extra job, an extraordinary job of reaching out. So we want to recognize all of the teachers and the extra work and the effort that's being expended. We have some bumps in the road, but we will smooth that road out. And usually, I talk about the census. Well, here I am again. This is probably the third time I've mentioned the census, but I did read in the DNR the other day that Rockingham County had over 70% participation, more than people participating since in 2010. So I'm very happy to hear that. However, we still have a little bit of work to do, and I keep reading to find out whether or not the census will be finished on September 30th or will be finished on October 31st. I really can't answer that question. Maybe somebody here can, but I've been trying to find out. But if you have not completed your census, I encourage you to do it within the next couple of days, and let's hope that the completion date is October 31st so that we have a little bit more time. Thank you, Mr. Falk.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Dr. Shackle.
I would say, for me, the highlights of the last few weeks have been comments from families, from teachers, from administrators that, you know, speak about not only the things that are working really, really well for families, but also that bring suggestions on how to improve what our families experience. It's, you know, again, I will repeat that later. You know, all of us want students back in the building, and it just requires, you know, that folks adhere to the recommendations to prevent infection with the virus that causes COVID-19. And walking through the buildings and seeing, you know, the pre-K through first graders that we have in the buildings four days a week, work with those requirements and do a good job is just incredibly encouraging because, as one of the commentators here said too online, you know, it's, if that's what it takes to bring more students into the buildings, then that's what we need to focus on. And so far, and you'll see this in the data as well when it comes to COVID data in Rockingham County Public Schools, that that's the key piece that we have to focus on. And really, when people thought, you know, pre-K through first grade, no way are the kids going to be able to keep their masks on. Well, they are, and that's been one of the most encouraging pieces because it allows us to then plan our path forward to bring more students back if even the youngest ones can follow those strategies. And there are some other pieces to it, you know, in terms of overall disease spread, but that's been really encouraging. And for me, that was a highlight, you know, the productive criticism, you know, where people bring constructive comments for us to take back and work on, whether that's about how we, you know, should focus on more descriptive grades rather than letter grades at the elementary level, or whether that's, you know, to continue to focus on the strategies that are working even with the youngest kids. Those are all ways we can move forward in a better way and have more students in the buildings sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into our action agenda, the first item is approval of minutes from the last meeting from September 14th. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I so move that we approve the minutes from September 14th.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, any questions, any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Minutes are approved. Dr. Shackle.
We will have Mr. Reed present.
We will have Mr. Reed present the Beverage and Vending Concession Services RFP.
Dr. Shackle, Mr. Falk, members of the board, this evening I bring to you our recommendation for beverage vending concession services for the upcoming years. Request for proposal for the beverage vending concession services was sent to three companies. We received responses from Coca-Cola and Pepsi. I'd like to take this time to thank the members of the evaluation committee, Donna Abernathy, principal at Broadway High School, Drew Miller, principal at Montevideo Middle School, Eric Baylor, principal at East Rockingham High School, Will Crockett, activities director at Turner Ashby, Ryan Ritter, activities director at Broadway High School, and Mark Klesinski, maintenance facilitator. The committee met on September 15th to review, discuss, and evaluate the two proposals. The committee members ranked the proposals based on qualifications outlined in the RFP. Based on the results of the rankings, the committee recommends the contract be awarded to Pepsi. I also point out that every, not only did each evaluator rank Pepsi higher than Coca-Cola, each evaluator ranked Pepsi higher in each category. So it was a pretty convincing recommendation.
Based on the recommendation from the committee, I concur and recommend that the board award the contract for beverage services to Pepsi.
Board members, we have a recommendation by the superintendent. May I have a motion to that effect?
I so move that we accept the results of the board, of the committee meeting that Mr. Reed presented concerning the beverage vending concession services.
We have a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Been moved and seconded. Do we have any questions for Mr. Reed? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes.
How's the online auction going?
We have went through our first auction. We had very good participation. We had 229 items listed, all but seven received bids. We've had a little glitch with a number of items not being picked up, and that was something that we weren't expecting because the auction site had said that there would be credit cards gathered, and they had a glitch in their system that not all bidders had to enter credit card numbers. So we've got a little glitch there with 10 to 15 items that we were trying to get picked up. We are in the process of getting our second auction together that will go online Friday. That was going to be a little bit larger. It's going to have probably close to 300 items. There are going to be a lot of bus parts in that auction. We're going to sell the vehicles in this auction, so we've got two buses and three vehicles, three cars. So yeah, it's coming along. I see at least two more after this one also.
Great. Thank you very much, and thanks for all your work on that. And everybody else, get your credit card out and bid.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Now we move into information items. Item A, the 2020 school board meeting schedule.
Board members, you have in the materials the published meeting schedule, and as you know, we decided to take advantage of Dawn Woodrum's willingness... know, we decided to take advantage of Dawn Woodrum's willingness to host us here through October. And so then, for November and December, the meeting locations that were originally posted are based on this conversation we had a year ago that we wish was still a reality now, where students were in school every day, but just a little shorter, so we can give teachers some collaboration time. And to present those ideas to the community, we had scheduled meetings at the Elton Area Community Center, and then Keaseltown and Bridgewater, although, you know, some of those got shifted to other locations. But we also talked about, you know, at the last board meeting or the meeting before, that as we get into October, that we now need to make a decision, you know, what to do for these board meetings, whether it's the board's preference to continue at Rockingham Academy, or to schedule board meetings back at schools in the community. I don't believe that, you know, the community centers would be the best location at this point, you know, based on what we saw last year in terms of available space, and also just the topics that we're talking about. So I would like to get the board members' preference for how to proceed. Again, we have a couple more meetings between now and then that we can change the location, but I wanted you to have this, and if you want to, you know, have a conversation tonight to just provide some input, we can certainly take that into account, or otherwise, we can bring this back at the next board meeting for a decision on what to do for November and December. This is obviously a location, you know, that serves us well, and kind of the small, physically distanced environment, and so that's one option, or again, we could go to some of our schools if that was the board's preference.
Board members, thoughts?
I would say that we definitely, I would love to be able to go out into our communities, but I just don't think it's feasible in the virtual format that we're doing as a companion to these in-person meetings. That'd be a stretch for us to take all the equipment, and it could set us back a little bit as far as technology is concerned. I think each week we stay here, we continue to build upon the technology and getting us, ourselves to a point where we can be the best that we can be. We could go back out to the schools, I mean, if that would be the preference of the board. And I know that Mr. Perkins would be excited to cart all of his technology with him to the schools, and we have some built-in. I mean, I think that's the preference of the board members, but I don't, I don't see particularly a problem with us staying here through the end of the year, and then evaluate again early November as to what the second half of the year looks like.
Thank you.
I agree with Ms. Reed, except I, I keep hearing complaints about a buzzing noise and issues with the internet, and I hope I'm talking slow enough that they can do closed captioning tonight. And I can hear a buzzing in this room, so I'm wondering if a different facility would cut down on that. But I do really love coming to, to Rockingham Academy, and I appreciate your all's willingness to host us. It is a really nice central location. I'm just worried about whatever it is that's giving us trouble, and I wonder if it's the facility. I know that going to different places would definitely make it worse.
I think under the circumstances that staying here, if this is where we decide to stay for the remainder of the year, I think it would, would give some stability to the situation at hand.
These are extraordinarily difficult times for everyone involved, and I concur with Renee in that I think if we can continue to iron out bugs here, this is a preferred location in my mind at least. And I'm, I'm certain that Kevin is honing things and adjusting things as we go. And so I'm, I'm good here now, and for the near future, if you'll have us. Thank you.
I do want to clarify, though, that I don't feel like it's anybody's fault, which is why I'm saying, is it the building? So, and I do appreciate all that everyone has done to make these meetings happen and to make them available online, so thank you for that.
Next up, superintendent's status update for the school reopening plan.
As I indicated in my email to families yesterday, and as we talked the last few weeks, I do want to provide an update not only about the opening of schools, and I think, you know, the public comments tonight, and also the emails that you have received, you know, from families who said, you know, that things are going well for them. It's, it's a mixed bag, obviously, and it's similar components of opening that some appreciate while they don't work as well for others. I also wanted to provide an update in terms of a path forward. We had said back in August, when we talked about the reopening plan, that come October, we would look at the health data and then potentially decide whether additional grade levels could return to in-person learning. And so I want to provide you with an update on what a path forward may look like, but then also address this lingering question about why there isn't a lot of news coverage about COVID cases in our schools. And so it, it's important for the community to know what's going on, and anyone who works in a building or has students in a building, if their email accounts are set up for the notifications, just like for every other notification, then they are informed, but there isn't just a press release every time that there is a positive case in the building. And it's also important to understand that when we talk about a positive case in one of our schools, that does not mean that the person was infected in the school. It simply means someone was in the building who, at some point, tested positive, and we have to take a look at, you know, what that means for others, where others exposed. And so I'll provide an update about that as well. The first few slides are just a review, again, of what we previously talked about on a number of occasions. The key question, can we keep staff and students safe if we do provide in-school education? Our strategies, as much as we want to sometimes just say, you know what, we'll just go forward and do, you know, what we wish was reality and what we could just do. There are, there are a lot of experts in this field that work for these agencies that really do provide national advice, state advice, and local advice, ranging all the way, you know, to international groups like the World Health Organization. And so that all has to be reconciled in our environment, and there are legal implications for going against guidelines from health agencies. And also, you know, we are not the experts, we're not epidemiologists or infectious disease specialists, but we have access to those. And so it always serves us well to take a look at what experts recommend. Our plan, three different options, either all in person, all distance learning, or kind of that transition phase where we have a mix of in-person and distance learning. And the way we said we would determine the phase that we are in as a school division would depend on the current phase of the economy, local disease spread, the coordination with local health officials that continues to happen, and then also the availability of COVID-19 testing. One of the concerns early on was the test results would sometimes take two weeks to get back to people, and that's not a model where you can really responsibly open schools, and that's improved significantly. So for most of the tests now, there's just a few days before our results are available. In order to make our classrooms safe, we'd said that, you know, two of the key strategies will involve desks being six feet apart and face coverings being mandatory, except for designated mask breaks. Then we would have additional options in place if teachers wanted to have those, and there's some additional, you know, small adjustments that we've made where those were needed if one strategy wasn't possible, you know, to implement a different one. So the experience during the first few weeks, what has gone well? We did hear from many parents that virtual learning for them went better than expected. Now, it doesn't mean that those parents would rather be in a virtual environment with their students than have students attend physically, but based on what they expected this to be, they were impressed by the quality of education that teachers are still able to provide. What's also gone well is what I talked about in my highlight, physical distancing, and the ability of students to keep on their face coverings consistently in the lower grades. And so the educational environment for those, especially with solid internet connections and, you know, kind of an understanding of how Schoology, you know, handles their classes, they were positively surprised by how well, again, our teachers were able to communicate with them, the types of environments that they created for them. And so we got a lot of positive feedback. But on the other hand, when we look at what has not gone well for some, it's same thing, virtual learning. When an internet connection isn't stable, we heard that earlier, when students or parents have difficulty navigating Schoology, or if there were issues with Zoom naviga-, with Zoom interactions, then there are certainly, you know, those who feel that that's not a good environment, and again, it pushes us to reconsider having students in school in person, at least in a blended model. And so the virtual environment, to me, is impressive in the sense that teachers who really have all the expertise in this kind of personal care for students, in creating learning spaces in the buildings that are engaging, that are interactive, where students work with others on group projects, that they have had to redesign what they have done for years into a new learning environment, and have done so extremely well. Of course, when you compare it to a normal school year, you know, that's where you then see, you know, what we're still missing, like we heard earlier, you know, the social contact, coming to school because of friends. You know, we know that those are key pieces of, of being in school, and so we continue to talk every day about what it is we need to do, and what it is we need to see in terms of the health data and in the community to justify that. And so what's next? You know, this is the question, right? Can we bring more students to our buildings for in-person learning? And from the very beginning, we had said that that would involve a review of available health data, and then also to talk about a potential timeline. What would be the steps? You know, early on, we had already said for high schools, because of the four-by-four schedule, and because of the oldest students also being, in terms of contagiousness, you know, in this environment, being as contagious as adults, that's kind of the trickiest situation. And also, you know, younger children in, in terms of, you know, families needing to be there, or an adult needing to be there in the home with a young student, you know, that's different for the high school students, and so it's also a little bit easier to justify that high school, you know, would continue through first semester virtually. But when we look at the health data, just recently, really, something happened that we had asked for back in June, and that was that both the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the Virginia Department of Health provided some more specific guidance. So giving school divisions tools that allow us to support the decision-making process. What should be the metrics that we look at, and in what combination are different scenarios in a school environment justified? And so in the presentation, I did provide the links, so as we post this, you know, those links will be available. So the CDC guidance actually contains a nice color chart that explains what we should be looking at. VDH, just today, at 10:30 AM, made a dashboard available to the public, so no one in this room has really seen this information, so this will be the first time I get to show you now what VDH has actually done. And then we will also, of course, look at positive cases in the school division. And then it's always important when we talk about health data to understand the context. So when we see 200 cases in Rockingham County, or 120 cases in one day, are these all cases that are tied to JMU off-campus housing, or is this truly a spread in the community? So that's always important to keep that in mind, because it qualifies even the dashboard data that we see. So the CDC guidance, I don't want to go into all the detail here, but at the top, you can basically see from green to red, and we all have an intuitive understanding of what those may mean. If we're in the green area, that's a good thing. If we're in the red area, that's not so good. And the, the core indicators, really, that, there are two core indicators, and those are the number of new cases per 100,000 persons within the last 14 days. So in Rockingham County, we have about 82,000 residents, and so we can basically calculate, and VDH does this for us, what the number of new cases per 100,000 residents has been for the last 14 days. And if you look at green, you know, you'd want to be less than 20, and you'll see what the actual numbers are here in, in just a minute, because we got close to 200 at one point. Percentage of PCR tests that are positive, so it's that positivity rate during the last 14 days. So even that has to be qualified, because we are, again, in a situation where most of the tests that are administered in the large-scale testing events are only to those who show symptoms, or live with someone who has symptoms. And so that increases the positivity rate. You have, you have to adjust for that, right? So if you do just widespread community testing without those qualifications, that's what these numbers would be of interest. So we always talk about 5% being a good number, less than 2% being really ideal, less than 3% would be, you know, a great number in that dark green. But then, as with all things, if you face some issues with those numbers at the top, then they can be somewhat mitigated by implementation of those strategies that we always talk about. So for example, if we have all five strategies that are listed here in place and implement them well, then that puts us in the green area for that component, and so that has to then be weighed against the actual information for the other two core indicators. And so, you know, consistent and correct use of masks, distancing, hand hygiene, cleaning and disinfecting, and contact tracing. And those are the same, you know, issues that we talked about in the summer. There are secondary indicators, again, that go from green to red, and those involve things like percent change in new cases, if the case numbers are dropping, that's of course a good thing, hospital inpatient beds that are occupied, intensive care unit beds that are occupied, hospital inpatient beds in the community that are occupied by patients with COVID-19, and then also localized outbreaks. And so, again, those are secondary indicators that, that can help qualify kind of those top two indicators of cases and positivity. And so for today, those numbers at the very top, the total number of new cases per 100,000 within the last 14 days is 195. So that's in the second highest category. We'd have to go below 50 to go to yellow. The percentage of tested a positive, 8.2%. Again, that's that second to highest category, we would have to go below 5% to be in green. And so those are, as of today, certainly of concern, right? And so, again, if we qualify that though with JMU data, then, you know, it changes the picture a little bit. And what you also see, and that's, that helps with this in terms of understanding of trends, is that the secondary indicators are all green. So we've had a 44% drop in cases, the percentage of hospital inpatient beds, and the percentage of beds occupied by COVID-19 patients, they all are in that green area. So in that sense, the trends and the secondary information looks pretty good. They're not a lot of people in the hospital, especially with COVID-19, and that's in part explained by the age group that has the most infections right now being, you know, 19 to 28-year-olds. If we look at this as a trend over the last, so from the first day of school, September 10th, to the following Monday, to the Monday after that, and to today, you'll see that, and again, this always looks 14 days back, right? So on September 10th, that number was 224, clearly in the highest category, went up to 270 and then to 289 last week, because at, you know, at some point, we had more than 100 cases per day, and now that's gone down to 195. And so you can see within one week, that's a pretty significant drop. When we look at percentage positive, 8.6% to 9.3, 9.3, down to 8.2. Okay, so again, that's going down, and so what's important for us is, what will this look like two weeks from now? Right? That's the key question for us, and that's what we- That's the key question for us, and that's what we do have to continue to take a look at. Again, this is the most granular data that we have access to. We don't have this information in a way that excludes JMU housing. And early on, it looked really good in the county because one of the approaches that the county took was to actually work the two major JMU housing areas. And so the county worked directly with the management companies to try to reduce the number of parties that would take place, and they were very successful early on. As the city has cracked down a little bit more, some of the parties have shifted, and so the county is, again, re-engaging with those management companies. And I also have to say that, you know, again, like I said last time, you know, Jeremy Holloway, our fire chief, Chief Holloway, he's been amazing to work with to actually look at testing data that not officially can be, you know, publicized in terms of where those that are tested positive are located, but he can provide a good sense of whether this is really tied to JMU or not. And so we have to, again, pay attention to that, but even without JMU, the numbers aren't quite yet where we want them to be. Now, again, I want to reiterate that the mitigating factor is the successful use of these strategies of physical distancing. So when families ask us to bring everyone back to school, that's simply not possible. You can't bring all the kids to school on the same day and maintain six feet of distancing. And if you don't, and you have a positive case, everyone who is within six feet is automatically considered exposed. So it's not a responsible way we can structure the day. So when we talk about bringing students back, the question is, can we implement the hybrid plan that we had early on, two days a week with half the students in the buildings? Now you can meet that physical distancing requirement because it's the most important component when we talk about exposure, consistent and correct use of masks. That has really been very encouraging so far, and so we do see that, again, as a continued strategy that will help us in that process. Hand hygiene, respiratory etiquette, you know, something we work with kids on all the time, that also will help us long-term, just like the first two, when the flu season actually does hit, right? So in the past, during flu season, we've had kids out. This year, we hope that, you know, this implementation process of masks, distancing, hygiene, cleaning, disinfecting will also reduce the number of students exposed to the flu virus, at least in our buildings, right? And so what's important here is that the community realizes that these are also important away from school, because if we do a good job in our buildings to distance the kids, to have them wear masks, then it's not helpful when those same students then have events in large groups where none of those strategies are in place, because what you'll end up with is those kids then coming to school infected by others in the community. And so in our environment, you know, we can enforce these, and it's important for the community to continue to take those seriously away from school. And then the last one, contact tracing with the Virginia Department of Health. It's not really something that we talk a whole lot about, but there are protocols in place every time we have a positive case in one of our buildings. So if someone comes to school, is sent home because of symptoms, they turn out to be positive, that contact tracing takes place in two different places, really. Once in the school division, so we work through that with administration in the building, with the person that tests positive, to determine whether anyone meets the definition of exposure. But the information also goes to VDH, and every positive case, VDH does additional contact tracing, because we don't know the contacts, you know, outside of school. So VDH is involved with that as well. So these are really important. So in terms of positive cases in Rockingham County, again, when we talk about positive cases, it's important to note that these are persons at school who test positive, not that those are people who were infected at school, right? And so that's important. We report it to VDH, we do the contact tracing, and then every time we have someone at school who tests positive, we notify that school community. And the letters are typically one of two formats, one that says there was additional exposure, and those who were exposed have been notified individually. That's always our first step. So if someone tests positive, and we had a case at Central Office recently, so someone tests positive, and we determine that someone was exposed, and that person gets a phone call, and we let them know that they were considered exposed and what the next steps are. But then the rest of the school community, parents and staff, are also notified. So that's the positive notification, the building letter that many of you have received. Obviously, we send you copies of those, and then also that staff in the schools have received where the letter states that either nobody has been exposed or those that were exposed have been notified, but that if you didn't get a phone call, then you were not exposed. And it involves, of course, quarantine for those that were exposed. Now, how do we define exposure? There are actually clear guidelines from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. The most important factor, other than healthcare settings or taking care of someone that has the disease at home, but in our environment, it is either direct contact. So if someone sneezes right in your face, you get direct contact with their sneeze, you know, if that person is sick, you're considered exposed regardless of how close that was, or that you are within six feet for 15 minutes or more. And that's why the physical distancing is so important. Now, masks actually don't factor into that determination, right? So a while ago, the exposure definition was within six feet for 15 minutes or more without a mask on, but that has changed, and so the definition of exposure is simply within six feet for 15 minutes or more. And so if we were not to enforce six-foot distancing, we would increase the number of exposures significantly. And so again, that's why that's an important component of our process. So how many positive cases have we had in our buildings since the first day of school? There were some early cases in the early summer that involved, for example, an athletic practice, but since the first day of school, we've had one student at Montevideo Middle School and five at Massanutten Technical Center. Staff, we had three at Central Office, one at Elkhorn Elementary, one at East Rock, and one at Riverbend. And with the exception of the Central Office case, none of the others involved other exposures. And so that's always really important, again, to keep in mind. So when people look at MTC, for example, five cases, that becomes an immediate question. And it's one of the reasons why simply publishing a number isn't particularly helpful, because you have to know the context. So with MTC, five students tested positive. Now, what you have to understand was that they were all in different classes, they weren't even all on the same day, that MTC also has classes that aren't even taught at that school. So for example, you know, if that happened at the ACT production program, that would be on a farm that's, you know, miles away from MTC, that each class at MTC actually has a separate entrance into that class, that we have more than 600 students at MTC, and so that that is less than 1% of the student population. With a general rule that less than 3%, if you tested everyone, 3% positivity would be awesome. So there are simply cases that reflect the spread in the greater community. And so as we go through these, five cases at a school like MTC aren't that unusual. And also that MTC has done a really good job in terms of separating students by at least six feet, and that masks are worn all the time. And so when we talk about these cases in the school division, it's important for everyone to understand, if we bring more and more students back into our buildings, we will have more persons in our buildings that test positive. That's a reality. Every school district that has opened, every school district that's brought students back in a hybrid format, they've all seen this. What's important is, are others exposed? That's what we really have to worry about. And so in order to prevent exposure, we have to make sure that we continue to focus on six-foot distancing, masks being worn, hygiene, disinfecting and cleaning, but also the contact tracing with VDH and inside the school district. So what does a timeline for potentially adding more students to our classrooms look like? In the original plan, as we said, you know, in October, we would review the health data. Based on where the numbers are right now, we certainly do want to see a couple more weeks of trend data to determine whether these numbers are going down, especially the new cases, positivity rate going back down. And then the three different areas, the way we have this in our plan, and I think we can continue to follow that, is that elementary schools would be looked at first with a possible return to the blended schedule for grades two through five. If the trend data looks okay for the next few weeks, we could make that decision at the October 12th board meeting. And then the return of students after transportation schedules would be adjusted depending on which grades it is. Teachers have to have time to switch that learning mode back again, so we'll need some time, you know, to get everything ready, and then students could return by early November, potentially after the election, in those grade levels that we determined to be safe to return, right? So that would be at the elementary schools. And then at the other end, high schools, I think we will continue, again, based on the four-by-four schedule, also to not return before second semester. And for middle schools, again, that's an ongoing conversation. At this point, it would certainly be preferable to start with elementary grades, to have the elementary students back on an AB schedule if we feel that that's safe. Again, that decision would be made based on the data that we get over the next few weeks, but then also have a conversation whether that is something we should consider, right? Whether we should leave middle schools virtually for the rest of the first semester, as a number of other school divisions, you know, have announced as well. But again, that's a conversation that we can have, again, based on what the trend data shows over the next few weeks, and also in conversations just with middle school administrators to see, you know, what makes more sense at the middle school level. But certainly at the elementary schools, we hope to have a clear picture by the October 12th board meeting. And I will answer any questions you may have. Ms. Lower indicated that she has a few ready, so.
Okay, the burning question that I get from other parents is, why can't we just send them all back four days a week or five days a week? If I, as a school board member, wanted to vote for that, why can't I?
So one of the key considerations would be that you can't send the kids back four days a week without violating the six-foot distancing rule. There's simply not enough space in our buildings and also, now, that's why for pre-K through first, we could do it, because we could split the classes and there's enough staff to supervise half the class for the time that they're not with their teacher. But we don't have double the staff that we normally have in a school year to accommodate that, so, and we wouldn't have the space either, right? Because then you would have to do that at the middle and high schools as well. So four days a week isn't possible without violating the six-foot rule, and violating the six-foot rule, as soon as you have a case, you would have additional exposures, and it's also not considered safe. And there are certain implications for violating the guidelines that the Virginia Department of Health, you know, has provided to us, one being that there are legal implications. So, for example, liability insurance won't cover you if you go against the advice of public health officials. And so those are certainly things that we have to keep in mind, and also, you know, from a public health perspective, it's not safe. So, you know, six-foot distancing is pretty much the standard at this point, and that's why if we return, we would return to the AB schedule.
Thank you. What can we do for the students, like the young man who was here earlier, that are having trouble with connectivity and having trouble staying on and reaching their teachers?
Sure. So for families that can, do not have an internet connection that's working for them at home, schools have offered space in the buildings so that students can be in the building while those Zoom sessions take place. Of course, at the elementary schools, again, if by October 12th, we decide to return students, then, you know, we would have to make sure that in the two days, you know, that students are physically in the building, that, you know, all the core activities that students need the most are taken care of in two days. The benefit would be half the class size, because with distancing, you know, you only have half your students every day. So it's an interesting way of actually finding out what can be accomplished in half the time with half the students, right? And so I think there would be a key focus, you know, on that. But again, depending on the internet connection, I know we've ordered additional hotspots from a different vendor, so as those come in, you know, we'll have to take a look at the specific cases, whether the T-Mobile hotspots that we have out now, whether in that area, you know, Verizon hotspot works better. And so, you know, again, the internet connectivity, that's not really within our reach, so if the internet connectivity at a particular residence is poor, then, and our hotspot doesn't, you know, work any better there, then there's not really much we can do other than to offer the students, you know, space in the building to complete their online activities there.
Thank you. And part of why I'd have heard it from my highlights earlier, I, like I said, I have children in the system, and early in the week, one of them came to me, he's like, "Mom, I'm just, I'm not doing well." And I was really kind of surprised to hear that, because I thought we were doing great. So we got on Power School, and we looked, and we saw what classes were, or what assignments weren't done, and we emailed the teachers, and the teachers emailed us back. They were great to work with. And it, it's not easy. It's not the environment that we want to be in, but the teachers and every person in this room, every person within the Rockingham County Public School System are, want to support the children. They want to be there for the children, and I truly appreciate that. And my personal advice for parents is, reach out to the teachers first. If the teacher, if you can't find anything with the teacher, reach out to the principal. I appreciated hearing from people tonight, but I can't help you from my position with the teacher in the third grade at a specific elementary school. You really need to work with the teacher. Would you give any further advice, Dr. Schikele?
Yeah, there was an interesting piece in the Washington Post this weekend by Daniel Willingham that most of our teachers know about, because it was the author of a book that we studied as a school division last year. He's a psychology professor, and he's a cognitive scientist who really focuses on how people learn. And so he wrote a piece about his experience with his own children, and he talks about how we remember things long-term. And so when we think back to our own school years, and how we picture that based on repeated experiences really colors other events during that time. And so if we had generally positive experiences that were repetitive, then we see other events as positive, even though at the time, we may not have enjoyed them. And so he focuses on doing things during this pandemic that make kids see positive things, positive outcomes, look at positive components of the day, celebrate something every day, you know, with his family, to talk at the dinner table about, you know, what are you grateful for this day, what went well today, and to find and look for positive components, even though we struggle with a lot of things, what is it we can find that's good? And to really try to have these repeated positive events in our days, because even though students might be frustrated at the moment in 2020, and, you know, the theme of when is 2020 over, right? It's everywhere. But that's a focus on, you know, what's not going well, but what are the things that are good, and to really focus on those, because long-term, and that's what's important for children, how are they affected by this long-term? Long-term that can lead to better outcomes for them, especially when we talk about social, emotional health, is to, of course, that's not all there is to it. You know, kids need help. We have, you know, all the resources in place in terms of our counselors and our mental health professionals and behavioral health professionals, but, but as families, to focus on good things, because that long-term will have a positive effect on how we remember what is currently certainly a difficult time for everyone, right? And we all understand that.
And also keep up with Power School.
Keep up with Power School.
Definitely, Power School is your go-to place, I feel like, for figuring out what assignments you're missing, and then reach out to the teacher and figure out where you can find them. That's definitely been my experience, so.
And our learning management system, again, that's, that's what we work with. Schoology is the learning management system we use, and it should be a landing page, even if something else, you know, becomes... even if something else, you know, becomes kind of the, the avenue for, for providing information that for, at least at the secondary level, that, you know, Schoology is that one place that families go to to find out what their assignments are seesaw at the elementary level. And so we try to consolidate that, and yes, from there, it branches out. But we do always want to have, you know, one place that families can go to, so students can find their work. And I would also say, again, grace is more important than grades, right? So we have to understand that families struggle. If you have five kids at home and they're all in different grade levels, working on different things, managing this online environment isn't easy. It's very, very difficult, right? And so as educators, we also understand that. And so it's important for us to focus on, again, what benefits kids long-term. And if I have a student for two hours, what's the most important thing I want the student to take with them from those two hours? Right? And so that's important. And again, to give grace when, when things don't go well for that student and to provide them with the opportunities they need.
I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to see the kids in school, right? When I walk into a school, I want to see classrooms where kids are engaged in these learning activities. All our teachers want that. And it's just difficult sometimes when health data, you know, in some ways, sometimes it helps us make the decisions because it confirms what we believe, but when it doesn't, we still have to make sure that we follow that same path, right? So we can't always just, you know, go into it finding information that confirms our own belief. That's, you know, that's sometimes uncomfortable, you know? We've all been in these positions where we thought, oh, we can do this. And then you look at the underlying information, it's, it's something else that we need to do. And again, the sooner we can safely have students in our buildings and keep staff and students safe, the sooner we will be happy educators, right? That this is, I understand this is incredibly tough for families, and it's incredibly tough for their teachers and administrators as well.
We appreciate hearing from the, the parents, because then we know what we need to, to work on.
Absolutely.
Could you speak just a bit to the considerations for special ed children? And especially self-contained children who a day lost is truly, makes a big difference.
Absolutely. And so when we talked about bringing students back to school, there certainly has been the, the focus on the most vulnerable populations. So the early learners, you know, reading is difficult to learn in a, in a Zoom session. So the early learners that we've brought to our buildings, but also English language learners and students with disabilities. And so the, the difficult part is always that we have to reconcile, on the one hand, that we can't create environments that create health risks. But on the other hand, that we need to make sure that students have the support that they need. And so we've brought back special education students, you know, in many environments. And the focus is on students that, you know, receive more than 50% of their service, you know, in special education. And so, and you know, the self-contained students, where that's of course exclusively how they receive it, you know, that's a special consideration for us. And it is also an area, you know, where we are truly showing that there can't be just a singular focus on one mitigation strategy. So for example, we've worked with families that have autistic children that aren't able to physically keep a face covering on. But what alternative strategies can we use to make it possible for that student still not to be an infection risk to others? And so, you know, we, again, engage with individual families and the IP teams, you know, work through that and the school administrators and our special education staff. And so that's one of the key focus areas, you know, that, that's existed in Rockingham County. Again, along with EL students, and then again, that's why the youngest children are also in our buildings four days a week.
Anyone else?
I have a couple. So, Dr. Scheichel, we did get a mention about call center. I know during the day hours, we've had a call center, correct?
So, yeah, well, it's not directly, you know, you call and you get someone on the phone, because we have, you know, 12,000 students and, so in IT, that's not really staffed for that call volume. But there's a process where families can request help and receive a call back. Yes.
So one of the questions came up with evening hours, and I'm wondering if there's a possibility, and I just hate to add to your plates, but maybe we have some parents that can help parents here. And maybe that can even be a school-based opportunity where some parents who are using some of these systems and have become more savvy can help other parents and be contacts for other parents. So they resolve some of those evening hours without overburdening our own faculty and staff, so.
Yeah, and I, and I think, again, in part, that's, that role has been taken on surely by teachers, you know, with the 20 students that they have in a class. And, and of course, you can't spend half your class, you know, providing tech support. I know that some families have connected informally, but I will certainly, you know, be able to reach out and ask for those that have the skill and the ability to help other families, you know, on a volunteer basis to let us know and to make that information available. Of course, we also don't want one family then to answer, you know, 20 phone calls when they're really focused on helping their own child learn, you know, that evening, so. But it's certainly, again, like many things, on a, yeah, and the community comes together and, and people help each other, then we get better outcomes.
Um, second question is, is if you come back to us October 12th with a plan, what, do you have any foreshadowing of what the turnaround or pivot would be on that?
Yeah, it would, so the, the turnaround would, the earliest we would feel comfortable, if on October 12th, we decide, let's say, second through fifth grade had to come back, AB day would be early November. So we've, we've worked, you know, transportation has to solve transportation issues now. You have to have some time to get new routes together, because you would add, you know, four grade levels. That's more than doubling the size of the transportation project at that time. And if you add, you know, additional grade levels, it would be even more. So based on our conversations with administrators and also what teachers need, you know, you have to remember, teachers now teach in an environment where they have a Zoom session with students four days a week. And so while that continues, they then have to be ready to teach twice a week, or four days a week in person, twice with group A, twice with group B, but also have time to have activities for the students when they're not in school. So again, that does take some time, because you, again, have to focus on, at what point are we going to get there? So what curriculum elements have to be transitioned to the other model? And then you also have to have time for families, you know, who originally may have selected the Home Learning Academy to say, you know, what we want the kids in the AB model or vice versa, right? So it has to be a little bit of an adjustment time.
Okay. I guess one of the things that I was thinking about is the Thanksgiving break. When, I don't, I can't recall what the calendar looks like or how many days they have off, but the consideration of that, that we'd have them for a few weeks and then they'd go off for Thanksgiving break. And our hope would be that they would stay in the bubble of their families and things like that. But the exposure risk could be there and then bring them back between Thanksgiving and the winter break, so.
Sure. Yeah, right. And so when your question was, you know, what would be the earliest? That would be, you know, probably after the election. And that would give not quite four weeks, which would be the minimum that schools would need. Thanksgiving break would make that a more comfortable transition. So certainly, you know, that would be easier to process by both transportation and schools. But November, you know, November 5th or whatever that Thursday is would be the earliest possible date.
Have you given any consideration to staggering the return of middle schoolers if we decide to do it? I know I've heard some feedback about sixth graders particularly. It's a new year, new school, different kind of atmosphere, more difficult transition for them.
Yeah, we will consider everything, right? And so in terms of the process, I didn't really talk a whole lot about that. This week, we are reconvening the reopening committee to have those conversations, right? What are we seeing in schools? Where are the needs? How far do we push that? And so it doesn't mean that the recommendation can only be two through five, right? Or, I mean, it could be two and three, right, second grade and third grade. But it's kind of these cuts that, that are the logical ones, you know? Do we bring all the elementary kids back? And then do we add some middle school grades? Again, in one of the comments, even it was second through sixth. And it's, in fact, one of the comments we even heard last year, right? That, and when we talked about before and after school care, how the sixth graders are really, for the most part, still elementary kids to some extent. And so that, all of those will be considerations. And again, that's, that's the work that we'll do over the next few weeks. Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you, Dr. Scheichel.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is school board questions. I'd like to start with Ms. Lauer.
Okay, it's not really a question, but I did want to just add that after we worked through the issues and my son kind of felt a little bit better, I wandered through his classroom, or through his classroom, through his room. And he's like, hey, Mom, look at this. Join my class for just a second. And I looked and several of his friends were in a breakout session with him. So they do get to spend some time together, and it's not ideal. But at this point, we just have to find the lemonade where we can, because we've got a whole pile of lemons to deal with. So I would like to just thank everybody for their support and their hard work. And, you know, keep, keep finding the sugar where you can. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. McWhoeke.
Well, I'm going to piggyback on Mrs. Lauer's lemonade and Dr. Scheichel's grace. And we heard even in the comments this evening, people are running out of grace. And we're asking them to please work with us and work together for the benefit of our students.
Thank you. Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Folk. I believe it was either this week or two meetings ago, we were supposed to honor our retirees. Is that correct, Ms. Doug? It would have been tonight. So we, we're definitely going to recognize them. There's no doubt about it. It's, those are well-deserved accolades that need to go to them. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Ms. Hanger is going to retire this week, who has worked for Ms. Mass for how long, Ms. Mass? So she's worked with Ms. Mass for 23 years and has been in Rockingham for 33 years. And, you know, when you call the central office, her or Ms. Bocock are the ones that get the questions that come into that, the good, the bad, and the really ugly, and have handled those conversations like a virtuoso pianist, you know? And we're going to miss her. So if you would extend for me, and I think the rest of the board members, congratulations on her retirement. We're going to really miss her. I know you are. Those are big shoes to fill, and we've appreciated her service to Rockingham County. So thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Dr. Scheichel.
At this point, we're pretending that she's not leaving, so. We really tried to not give her too much of a hard time. But yeah, that, that will be really tearful moment, I think, and, but we are going to celebrate with her. On another note, I want to point out that I just received a text message that tonight's audio was much better and no buzzing sound. So thank you, Mr. Perkins, and to everyone who contributed to that. So I thought you might want to hear that.
I've received a couple of messages, too. One is related from a third-grade student in Rockingham Schools about Zoom calls. Zoom calls with your class for two hours is rough on the kids. They need a brain break that's longer than five minutes. So if we could do one for an hour in the morning and one an hour later, or another one that's later, that would be super helpful. Received two messages. One is much better tonight. Closed captions aren't happening tonight, but the buzzing is much less and the voices are clearer. And another that says the sound is much louder and clearer tonight. Typically, you can't hear anything. So we're gaining ground. Improvements are being made. We now have need to enter into closed meeting. May I have a motion to that effect?
I move that the Rockingham County School Board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, A1 personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such an individual's assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation, and A1 and A8 for the consideration of personnel item 202002 involving a complaint of prohibited misconduct involving certain personnel and consultation with legal counsel regarding the related process and procedural requirements.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. We have a properly made motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. It's approved. We are now entering into closed session. Thank you very much for coming this evening. Have a nice evening. Be safe on the way home.